So the back area Danielle wants to use as a workout area and then.
Can I get a second for this, please?
Second.
Hold on there. I'd also like to make a motion. To move some stuff around. Do I have to wait for this vote? You want me to wait?
The second just opens up for discussion.
Okay.
So you're fine. So Colin could he also add his request or do we do a vote on this first?
No, well. You can realistically do it. Either way, I mean, if there's another amendment, it might make more sense to bring up proposed amendment before you vote on it.
Right.
Okay.
That's what I said.
Alright, so um.
I told him to go ahead and I was listening.
I would like to move the closed session to after the items for individual discussion. With respect to the time of the people that we have here in the audience today. And. I would also like to. Um, switch. Item A and B. So B would take the place of A and then A would take the place of B.
So you want to discuss the.
Yeah, so discuss uh.
B before A.
The region affordable housing before discussion to approve. Uh, change of LLC.
Why? You have a rationale for it?
For moving those two discussion items?
Yeah, flipping A and B.
Yes, um. I think it's pertinent to the discussion.
Okay.
Helen, do I need support on that?
You need a. So there's been the mayor's suggested changes and your suggested changes need a motion and a second.
Some more support.
Motion in a second.
So but then we also are moving the closed session.
To after.
Like before future agenda items.
Right.
So I guess the only issue is that we had all she's on, she's on, okay, okay.
So. Then do we, so we have three different motions. We're removing the presentation, moving closed session. To after app and then we are respecting. Doing the session before the approval. And those council members?
Yes.
Okay. So. Can you pick up a vote? Yeah. Not the number Williams?
Yes.
Reed, yes. Jackson, yes. Oliver, Carol. David, yes. Brian.
Yeah.
And Mayor Senator.
Yes.
Ms. Jones, can you mute, please?
Public comments, um, if there's anybody in the gallery that would like to stand. And address counsel in regards to an agenda items really, you have the opportunity to do that at this time and you will have three minutes. All right. In our packets, we have. The minutes for our March six study session. And the March six regular session, do I have a motion to approve?
Some will support it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Right, we don't have time to part discussion. Uh, we. Affordable Housing Act.
Want to leave this discussion?
The discussion on the affordable housing.
Yep.
Um, I believe this should be led by the. Um, city manager. This is a project that you've worked on, right? Um. I think we need to discuss it openly in council to. Um. To really. Be brought up to speed as to. What this exactly is and what the intent of it is as well.
Yeah, so this is um. At your request, have this on as a discussion. This was provided to you all um by email to myself along with um EDC CEO President Virgil Ammerman. Met with Jane Jones along with Mark Newman and I believe Mary, you were on that initial um meeting. Um, to discuss potential opportunity to secure um federal appropriations or dollars to address an issue in our community. And when talking, we know that um affordable housing or just housing is there's a need for that here in our community. As well as um addressing the underrepresentation of homeownership. Um, so we had discussions on that if there is an opportunity to to kind of improve. Those issues or address those issues in our community. Um, this model, it was um or this pilot was creator. Um, like on the word modeled after um other models that were successfully implemented, one being in Raleigh and the other in. I think of the other one. Um, but it would, there are two requests, one would be working on financial research to identify um appropriate land to. Um, to build more housing options as well as work with. Um, banks and different developers to identify a a method that would work for to finance their potential developments. Also working with, like I said, local banking institutions to offer um financial opportunities to those to to essentially um secure. I'm owning a home. Second piece to that of that would be um a programming aspect to um provide opportunities for financial literacy. I know a lot of individuals right now are living paycheck to paycheck. So through these programs, they would learn and are subjecting themselves to payday loans, which are. In my opinion, credit predatory loans that put you further behind when you enter, you go, you take this load out with the hopes or and plans to pay it back upon your. When you get paid, but the interest rates on them are so so high that it just puts you further behind. So this program piece would offer that financial literacy or education to to our residents in our community, learn on how to improve your credit, how to. Um, be approved to um finance a home to become a homeowner, how to better budget and manage your manage um. The money that you bring in through working. So this with um conversations, we worked with Ms. Jones to to draft um an application to submit for uh the congressional spending request. They are tight timelines and deadlines um shift from day to day. Um, so these were submitted to um Senator Stabinow and Senator Peters office for for consideration.
Okay. Now, um. In this document, I see that we, so we requested 2.8 million.
Between the two programs.
Between the two programs. And then there's a match associated with this as well that it looks like about 2.2. Is that correct?
No, so the one in kind support for coming for us would be a hundred thousand. So we are looking at other opportunities to secure funding at the state level. Um, work with other um foundation and corporations to to support that budget.
Okay, hold on, so. Let's start with the first one. So the amount requested was 2 million. Um, the total project cost is 4 million. So. Are we required to provide a match to that?
So the one in kind support would be our match, which is a hundred thousand dollars.
So the city already has um 100, I mean. 1.9 million?
No, so there's time to um identify other funding opportunities to um to secure that, to take advantage of this. As I said earlier in our study session, we won't hear an answer on this until probably late November, December, if it's even selected to move forward. It has to be approved at the both um the Senate as well as the House level. So there's there's always a possibility that this will not move forward. But it's not a guarantee.
Okay, so. If it passes. We're asking for 2 million.
Correct.
We have to through um. Reaching out to found foundational funding, corporate funding. Um, state funding and other funding sources come up with the with the additional 1.9 million.
It's not the additional 1.9 million, it's the project support alone, so a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand.
So that's 550.
Correct.
I think the confusion is if you look on the first page, it says total project cost is 4 million. And then amount requesting is 2 million. So we're doing math. And where's the other 2 million coming? Your project support only comes in at 550. There's three items, develop and research for 2 million, building and renovation, 1.5 and technology, half a million. Where that's the question, where's this other 2 million coming from um? That make the 4 million dollar project. I would suggest that the 2 million probably allows us to get started. That we would then and because it took probably a multi-year program that the development and research part has to happen first. Before we figure out what buildings that we have to do and then developers would be the ones that we saddling up with the 1.5, recognizing they would have access to additional money. To help them build a project, a build a building or buildings plural that cost more than 2 million.
Correct. So let me clarify. So this request, it's only for the development and research aspect of it. So it's not including any of the actual building. That's just like for the total completion of this program, those are other aspects of that. So right now, we're just looking to research to identify methods to. To bring new housing.
Okay, now, um. So this for development and research. Okay. Development and research of affordable housing or low income housing?
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing. Okay, um. The process. For um. Allocating funds to a plan, right, for a plan. Like this. Being that we've had so many conversations around housing, um. Has this? I've been on council for a year. Has this been the typical way that things are done here? Where we um, we go out and look for funding before we actually have a set plan in place? Or a plan that we've actually um vetted at the council level? Because um. I think November or December 1, we voted on um coming back with the strategic, well. A plan for three different plans for housing and then now we have. This pilot plan, which is already um. Been applied for funding to support it. And. All the way up until me asking you to talk about this in this meeting today. It has been pretty much shut out from us all. I'm not sure, um, we we've seen it in the email. Um, but that email was what, two weeks ago, I think, maybe? Um, and after, after the funding was already applied for. So. I I don't know, do you you guys have any input as far as? Strategically us as a city applying for funds before we actually have been able to vet or add any additional input on um. Something that at the federal level will tie us to what's already in this document.
If I can, um, there is a plan. We just recently approved our comprehensive master plan and within there, there are several goal areas and one of them is to address and bring different. Um. Types of housing here. So this would fall under, this is kind of what we're doing. We're identifying a way to bring um a different level of housing to our community, which falls. Under what was approved by our planning commission as well as this body. So we're not. Working outside, coming up out of anything. This, we're following what has been identified as a goal by our by our residents, because we did engage with our resident stakeholders through that entire process. And they would like to see new housing options here in our community.
That's my pitch. So with regard to federal funding, I know that again, based on my experience last year at my job, um. We get a call, we got a call from our. From Branch County representative saying you've got literally five days to submit a proposal for uh, you know, an allocation. So we didn't have a chance to get our board of trustees on board other than by email and we had to draft something and we had to get it to our senator. Within five days, like we found out on a Monday, it had to be there by Friday. There was no way we were going to get a meeting together for everybody to get approval. The proposal that was written was vague enough so that after the fact, we could hone that. Proposal to meet needs that individual board members needed to have a say in, right? So it was for restoration of the theater, we asked for a million dollars. And well, what does that mean? That's a big general thing. We narrowed it down while the folks at the federal level were evaluating it. We ended up not getting it. We it didn't make it past the first round, but um, so that happens all the time because when people just, when the politicians in Washington or even Lansing decide they're going to start working on budgets. It's not set that like on April 1st is when we start budgeting. They got all kinds of other stuff going on and then all of a sudden, boom, it goes. And so it doesn't surprise me at all that this was sort of like, hey, we got to act fast. Because the deadline is is approaching and if we miss the deadline, we we're out, we're out for a whole year. And so I think that. In this, in defense of of the process that happened, it's sort of like we're at the. We're at the mercy of the federal government, people saying, okay, we've decided we're going to start talking about budgets. Even though it's it's March, normally it's maybe it's April or May, but you know, they decided they wanted to start early, so um. I also think that it's not necessarily the one and only thing we're going to apply for.
Yep.
Right? So. It doesn't shut out any other plans that other people have. This is just one thing.
So this does address the two two areas that we had talked about at length. In regards to being able to have ourselves prepared to bring in housing development. This is going to give us the money to start that process. But also the educational part. The resources that are also going to be given to our residents. So this, this is two different pieces, housing and the programming. Which is why we know we need, what we've discussed is a necessity. So you know, with this going forth, this, I don't remember in my lifetime, living here 55 years. That we've seen this type of money be able to come into our community to be able to create development, housing development. When was the last time we've seen large housing budget?
1970s.
Yeah, I was gonna say 1970s. So we are way overdue and the fact that we have somebody who's going to be in our corner fighting for us every step of the way. This is just hopefully given us a leverage. To get these funds. And so like with the Medicare part, having that money already in place, that allowed us to leverage other funds. That were available at given opportune times. So this would also help leverage us. When it comes time for other type of brands and funds that may be coming down to hopefully get more money on top of this.
Thank you. Um, no, definitely. Thank you for the additional feedback. I think it was very constructive. And brought a lot of context to um. You know, what's in the document, but. A few very important points were touched on there. Um. One being the residence and resident feedback. So. Resident feedback is what should govern. Counsel, right? We should be here as advocates for the constituents of the city. Um, our precincts and also the rest of the city as well, right? Um, and in doing so, we need to ensure that we're able to. Actually advocate when the planning of certain things are taking place to ensure that um. The representation for underrepresented groups. Um. I- i- is being. Handled delicately, but also being addressed, more importantly, right? Um. Understand the budgetary funding and having funds available. But I also know that if I tell the federal government that I'm going to do something that I'm then in turn tied to specifically do that thing. Um, my. For lack of a better word, frustration in in this scenario is. The fact that we're now just seeing this in a printed document inside of the um. The council agenda, whereas we probably should have been brought in on this conversation a little bit sooner. So that um, if we had any additional input, we would have been able to have that. Um, I know in the past deadline was also brought up. As um one of the barriers possibly, and I know a lot of the times I we're under um a certain constraint because you only have. A week and it's a meeting in between a meeting or we don't have a meeting, you know, in between to actually discuss it, right? Um. This isn't one of those things, um. The. The follow-up conversation we're going to have with um. Mrs. Jones. Will be about her providing services for the city, right? Now. It's been said that she also helped on this. Now, the February 14th. Date on. The document that was, that's in that section, right? I would imagine is tied to this, right? Am I far off in that? Either way, um. Either way, um. This document's been around for over a month and we're now just having this conversation. Last meeting, I was, I. I was told we were going to have the discussion at the meeting. It was put into the um city manager's notes, which is. The last thing on the general, on my agenda and barely anything that we actually discuss, right? So. For clarity, transparency and. To actually allow council members to have an input or insight on planning decisions like this. I think we need to actually have these conversations openly so that especially if there's. In a lot of the amount of time. Let's have these discussions so that. I can make sure that my constituents are represented. You all can make sure that yours are represented as well. And if we have any additional input. Here's or concerns, we'll fill in and we're able to tell people, hey, look. We're working on housing. We know it's something that's. A a constraint here in town and we have a plan in place or. You know, if the plan doesn't meet our our demands, we have input to try to bolster it up, to try to help, right?
I have to talk to him, but I kind of agree with him. I would very much like the things of this importance because it's very. I read it over. I understand most of it. But I I I think that when we're going to have things that are, because people are constantly saying with what's happening in Marshall. Albion needs to do, Albion needs housing, these are, and 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 I agree with that. But I think that there's some people who are brought in on the conversation and others who are left out. And I think that everybody should be brought in on the conversation so that we all will understand what's happening.
So um. So I I hear both of you in in your comments and and I respect them both, but I think that what I'm hearing is is that we as a council. Approve the strategic plan. And in that strategic plan, there were calls for figuring out a way to improve the housing in Albion. council, right? We should be here as advocates for the constituents of the city. Um, our precincts and also the rest of the city as well, right? Um, and in doing so, we need to ensure that we're able to actually advocate when the planning of certain things are taking place to ensure that um the representation for underrepresented groups um, i- i- is being handled delicately, but also being addressed more importantly, right? Uh, I understand the budgetary funding and having funds available. But I also know that if I tell the federal government that I'm going to do something that I'm then in turn tied to specifically do that thing. Um, my for lack of a better word, frustration in, in this scenario is the fact that we're now just seeing this in a printed document inside of the um the council agenda, whereas we probably should have been brought in on this conversation a little bit sooner. So that um, if we had any additional input, we would have been able to have that. Um, I know in the past deadline was also brought up as um, one of the barriers possibly. And I know a lot of the times I, we're under um, a certain constraint because you only have a week and it's a meeting in between a meeting or we don't have a meeting, you know, in between to actually discuss it, right? Um, this isn't one of those things. Um, the, the follow-up conversation we're going to have with um, Mrs. Jones will be about her providing services for the city, right? Now, it's been said that she also helped on this. Now, the February fourteenth date on the document that was, that's in that section, right? I would imagine is tied to this, right? Am I far off in that? Either way, um, either way, um, this document's been around for over a month and we're now just having this conversation. Last meeting, I was, I, I was told we were going to have the discussion at the meeting. It was put into the um, city manager's notes, which is the last thing on our general, on my agenda and barely anything that we actually discuss, right? So for clarity, transparency and to actually allow council members to have an input or insight on planning decisions like this, I think we need to actually have these conversations openly so that especially if there's in a lot of the amount of time, let's have these discussions so that I can make sure that my constituents are represented. You all can make sure that chores are represented as well. And if we have any additional input ears or concerns, we'll fill in and we're able to tell people, hey, look, we're working on housing. We know it's something that's a, a constraint here in town and we have a plan in place or you know, if the plan doesn't meet our, our demands, we have input to try to bolster it up, to try to help, right?
That's my reading.
I have to talk to him, but I kind of agree with them. I would very much like the things of this importance because it's very important. I read it over. I understand most of it. But I, I, I think that when we're going to have things that are, because people are constantly saying with what's happening in Marshall, Albion needs to do, Albion needs housing, these are, and, and, and I agree with that. But I think that there's some people who are brought in on the conversation and others who are left out. And I think that everybody should be brought in on the conversation so that we all will understand what's happening.
That's my French.
So um, so I, I hear both of you i- in your comments and I, and I respect them both, but I think that what I'm hearing is, is that we as a council approve the strategic plan. And in that strategic plan, there were calls for figuring out a way to improve the housing in Albion. And then I, and so our city manager goes out and tries to address that. And now we're telling her that no, we need to approve and be involved in all that conversation before she does that. Is that what I'm hearing? Or is that not what I'm hearing?
That's not what you're hearing.
Okay.
What, what, what you're hearing is if um, one of the directors needed to purchase some heavy equipment, they don't just go out and purchase heavy equipment. They contact their um, higher up, which is the city manager and they say, hey, I have a plan in order to do this, or we had discussions about tearing down buildings. They don't just go out there and, and order the demolition of this, of a building, right? Instead, they run the plan by the city manager. What I'm saying is, is we're all beholden to the people of the city of Albion. That's who I answer to, right?
Right.
So in order to do so, I need to be able to say, yes, I had input on this and you all are representing.
But you, I would argue that in fact, they were represented because they were part of the strategic planning process. So they had their input. We heard from them that they wanted us to address housing and this is a method for addressing housing.
Not being able to vet the, the process, not being able to vet the plan does not guarantee that they're representing.
Can I just say, Colin, I have a question. Can you clarify on, on that with vetting the plan and just clear on administrative roles and can we, how does that all pertain to our form of government?
Well, I think uh, some, some members of council were on the council the last time we did an M M L training and, and some were not, but I think probably the best line that I think came from our last M M L trainer is kind of the division of labor between council and city managers best summed up as it's for council determine the what and the why. The who, where, when, and how is for the city administration.
That's my reading.
Thank you. I don't think, I, I'm not trying to, and I don't think I have any, it's just trying to tell the city manager how to do her job. We need to understand what is being done and what we answer to the people. Now, she's voted in by us. We are voted in by our precinct. And if we don't take into consideration the people in our precinct, then they're not going to take us into consideration either. And so therefore everybody's got somebody else to answer to in order to get this thing done. Not that we want to tell her what to do, which our job is to instruct her as to what we want to do. But the thing of it is, is help me to understand, don't leave me out. And then all of a sudden you want me to vote on something that I'm really have been left out all this time and don't understand. And as far as that strategic plan, in a way that was a farce because I know I went around to people's door and knocked on it into people's houses and to different churches and everything, trying to get those things signed. And so many of them wasn't. So that really cannot count as what Albion is saying. But I don't, but it is not that we're trying to tell her what to do. We just need to have some understanding too. Before it comes down to, we need your approval and vote on this.
May I bring in Jackson?
Yes, Colin, I need your help. So when all this planning was going on, were you a part of it? Did you know about it going on?
As it relates to this stuff, the only thing I did was review the um, consultant's contract and make changes to it.
Okay. So anytime anything goes to the federal, we're not supposed to know anything about it. Now, if I see.
Are you saying, I'm sorry, did you say the?
The federal, like federal or senate or anyone, before any information goes to them. Shouldn't we know something about it? I, I mean, I'm lost.
Well, I don't know. I, I think saying.
I'm asking you a question.
And I'm, I'm giving you an answer.
Okay.
I, I think the term any would be very, very broad.
Okay. So I'm, if, if something of this sort, we'll stick right here where we at, was brought to the federal, to the senate, and we know nothing about it. Is that okay?
I think.
Is that okay, Colin?
I don't think it's a yes or no question. I think what you have bef- I think what's before you tonight is maybe getting a little over complicated. I mean, what in, in my mind, what you have before you is a question of do you want two million dollars in free federal money to study the, for development and research into uh, underrepresented chronic poverty uh, and homeownership in Albion? And the city is required to provide a hundred thousand dollar match for that, for a government program. I mean, that's what's before you. And so should the council be involved in the decision as to whether or not they, the, A, that that's something that the city warrants spending money on? Absolutely. That's a question for the council. Whether or not that money gets approved? Absolutely. That's a question for the council. I think you as a council have in, in a variety of ways, given the manager a big picture on, on what she's supposed to be doing as a manager. How she goes about that is largely her purview and brings anytime she needs to spend money or approve contracts or things like that to council for approval, which in my opinion is what you've got in front of you. That's, that's my two cents on it.
There's a lot of grants and applications. I mean, like we've talked about all the monies that we've been given to the city. There's a lot that we don't know about. We're happy to get the money. I mean, I don't think anybody would turn away free money to improve our community. So there's a lot that goes on from the KIP to the C, from the city manager, from the foundation. There's a lot that goes on in different agencies and entities to improve our community and we're not aware of it. But we're happy to get that money because it's improving our community.
I mean, I wouldn't, I mean, I'm not doubting in saying that we don't want the money. And there's a lot of money that comes in. I'm just asking that question because this is a large mom's money. If we can't match that, even though she says she's going to, you know, there's other entities, that's fine. Cause which talks about the military, anything else she's brought that to us and that we want to go forward with that. Okay. And I believe that's what she's saying now. But I just want more transparency because I understand there's, I, I just know there's more conversation that is yet going on with the field view and I want transparency. Okay. I want everything that we do, okay, to be legal and ethical. We have to, we have to, we have to hold this city up, okay? So don't, don't hit me, don't knock me over the head. I was right, you let me raise my hand and I say it was on my heart and the reason I asked you those questions. Okay. I'm not giving shit focus with you guys. All right? So if I'm able to ask the questions and I want the answers and I'm telling you why. So, and you can come behind me if you would like to, whatever, but I'm just letting you know why I'm asking these questions. Because I'm not sitting in this seat everywhere to get something of this sort. And we don't know how to begin, how it started, who's all involved with it? Who's really holding up who? Who's the middle man? Who's the bottom man? And who's top me? Okay? I'm not here for this city to go bankrupt. I'm not here to stop this city from being in progress. I just want my questions answered and make sure when I say yay, I'm saying yay to what you guys say you are going to do and nay to what maybe I don't believe is going to happen.
But I also think there's a lot of your guys' questions I could leave answered by Mrs. Jones in regards to how this process plays out. And I think if we are able to hear from her, we can probably get a lot of the questions answered and not try to figure that out themselves.
Well, you're right. And I just think when you put some piece of paper in it, it has from the uh, September, I mean, February the fourteenth, twenty twenty-three to February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, that tells me something's already started. And I think this is why you're getting all these questions.
Hmm.
Okay. That's, I'm just going to be honest with you. When you misrepresent that or put dates like that, but they're, I'm quite sure they're true. But no one's going to tell us that. And that's where I'm going to go back again. Legal. And not unethical. Because I don't want to date nothing. I'm going to tell you that now. That you guys started on, then talked to us about. And then you want me to sign.
There's nothing illegal that has taken place or happened when talking with Mrs. Jones about the date. And as Colin stated earlier in study session, it went to his office. There were some back and forth. And that's why it's here now for formal approval. There's nothing illegal happening about putting in uh, congressional um, spending requests. A lot of surrounding communities are doing it. I actually just submitted two letters of support for Calhoun County. I know Ms. Amerman, she was approached by county to support their um, their request city about a trade fair submitting two requests. This is not it. An uncommon thing for municipalities to do. And I think we should be taking advantage of any possible opportunity to bring in additional dollars to our community. But I, I, if this is not what the, this council would like to do, I have, we can resend our application and we will we will not take advantage of this round.
Sounds great.
Yes, um, okay, so for clarity on my position and everything that I've spoken to, um, yes, I'm concerned about us having a possible one point nine million that we need to raise. Yes, I'm concerned, possible, possibly, possibly. Um, I am concerned about the process in which we handle these things. Now, my position is when um, such a large ask or something like this that has come um, has been a hot topic, right? Housing has been a very hot topic here. Um, why not bring it to council? I, it, we could have had this conversation the second meeting in February. At that second meeting in February, um, and had I not requested to have this conversation today, we still wouldn't be having this conversation. And we'd still be out of the loop as far as any context to what this really is. That's what I'm saying. So I don't understand the um, the animosity and unwillingness to receive that feedback. Because that's the feedback I'm giving you all. Hey, when we're going to ask for something at the federal level that um, is going to impact all of our, the citizens of Albion and possibly any other funding that we may be able to receive as well, let's talk about it. Let's talk about it. What's the apprehension to having a discussion? That's why we meet. We can't have this conversation in closed session. And I'm not going to sit down and meet with each one of you individually because I don't have the time to do so. So this is both the place and the forum for this discussion. So there shouldn't be such apprehension to having this discussion.
Hi there. My name is Jane Jones. I'd like to correct some information that's been stated repeatedly, if that's okay?
Go ahead.
Is that okay?
She thought point order.
What's the, what's the point of her?
So I'm, I'm, I'm asking, uh, okay, so is, we are just having the discussion about uh, affordable housing. Okay. So she correct me if I'm wrong, Colin. Are, are we inviting her into this discussion or um, because I just feel like she should be able to have her own discussion in the next topic?
Well, you can have your own, you can have, I mean, it's, it's up to council to decide whether or not you think adding information from a third party will aid your discussion on the current, on the current item. If the council thinks that it would, you can, you can have any third party add to the discussion. If you don't, then you can wait until the next agenda item.
It appears.
Wait, uh, the, the council and Waller has made a point of ours. So the mayor has to deal with the point of ours.
So then you want to take it to a vote, or not? We can allow Ms. Jones to speak at this point?
No.
It's, it's your decision.
It's your decision. And then if council doesn't like your decision, there, there could be an appeal, but it's up to you to decide whether or not basically to say yay or nay about the point of order.
Because like she had said that she has information and I think that can kind of help bring resolution to a lot of us, if that's okay.
That's fine. I'm, I'm okay with it. You, are you okay with it?
If that's my. Okay, Jane, floor is yours.
I think I'm off mute. So I just have a couple of, couple of concerns that were raised to make sure that they're clarified answers. When the request for the two million dollars was done through HUD, HUD E D I, there is no match required on the federal side. What typically a senate office likes to see is that there's a total project cost. And that total project cost, they want to know what the C D S amount is of that total project cost. But they want to see the total project cost as far as what that looks like over, you know, one to two year period of time, like the council member said. He was spot on. So actually there is no actual match required. Yeah. Um, so on HUD and HUD dollars typically are, get, can be spent over six years period of time. So typically cities like yourselves, many of who I've worked with in the past, I've never been before a city council meeting before or never had even a city council involved in a C D S request before um, and done larger amounts. They typically go ahead and have their city manager work with their department heads. So like public works would work on one or I don't know, the police department, you could have a housing project that's works through the, the public works director or through whatever employee agencies that they have or departments that they have. But typically never, never rises to the level of the city council from my, from my understanding perspective. HUD again is up to six years. So if I was in your shoes, of course, I'm not elected, but if I was in your shoes and they're asking for proposals from municipalities, you submit at the time when they're asking for them. In this situation, just so you know, for the city manager's perspective, the timeframe got eliminated down to one week for the application due date. That came, I believe out of my expertise and knowledge, that kind of came after the Republicans took control of the House. There was a delay in the speakership because usually the House acts first per the constitution. This year that was a little different and the Senate acted first. So we had, we had a very tight deadline come up against us that nobody expected to happen. Usually these are due in, in the offices until, my gosh, end of March, beginning of April. This year, everything was fast forwarded really fast. And I think it has to do with politics, unfortunately.
So now is the opportunity to ask her questions? If you all have any.
Yeah, I don't have a question, but it seems to me after hearing, you know, from um, Ms. Jones as well as what uh, Mr. French had to say, this is something we can't turn down. We can't rescind our application. If there is something that needs to be done the next time, let's look at the next time. But this is too much money to get petty about the smaller things in terms of how it's going to be and the nuances. Let's look at the bigger picture in terms of what can be brought to the community.
Council, sorry, Councilman Lawler?
Thank you so much. I don't think it's, it's um, that we don't want to uh, take the money or anything like that. I think the concern for most of us, well, for some of us um, is how the process went. Um, I've been on council for six, six years now. Um, my first term, um, things were coming at us and I'm just being frank about it. Things were coming at us which um, within a couple of weeks, couple of days, we had to make decisions. You know, when you rushed into a, a decision, sometimes you make wrong decisions. So I think what um, some of us are asking here today is to, you know, you basically had enough time to let us know, even if this was a political um, slowdown, um, it still could have been put out there that, you know, we doing this, but it's being held up at the house. You know, just keep us informed like some of us are saying because wh- what if uh, somebody from the house or, or higher up from Lansing came to us about this and we know nothing about it. That makes us look not like we want to. But I mean, to go out and do something and we don't know nothing about it, you know, it's really embarrassing when somebody say, well, hey, you know, I heard this, that, and we like, I know nothing about it. That's, that's not a good feeling because I've been in that place before, but we do, um, I think what's, what's here today is we need to do a little bit better on our process.
Councilman Williams?
Yes, um, yeah, I think the conversation has gotten a little convoluted in that um, the topic of not wanting the money or rescinding the application, whatever, what have you. Um, we're not guaranteed to get the funds for one. And then secondly, this is more so a conversation that we needed to have about the actual plan itself because we haven't had a discussion about this plan. Now, if you all are on board with not having discussions about things that take place in the city going forward, then we should vote on not having discussions on anything that takes place in the city going forward. Other than that, I will um, always advocate to make sure that things are being discussed openly so that we are informed and we are aware of what's taking place here in the city.
And when we are not informed or when we are not aware, if a constituent asks me what is happening with the housing, a What is happening with the housing, or what is happening with something? You know, it is really okay to say, I don't know right now, but I can get the answer for you. That's when you pick up the phone and call one of these three people. We are here to answer all of the questions all of the time. You know, we've hired people to do that, and when we don't have the answer. All we have to do is pick up the phone and call and say, I'll get back with you as soon as I get an answer. So, but the nuance of trying to run day-to-day activities really isn't what MML tells us we're here for. So, you know, that part of it really concerns me. I don't expect to know everything. But I expect to know when I have a question, that I always have someone to go to to answer that question.
Can I call the question?
Yes, um. Okay, um, well, seeing that we have Ms. Jones on, um. I do have a couple of questions for her. Now, I can reserve a few of these questions for the actual um. Her actual agenda item. Um, but I do have um, a question or two that I would like to ask her as far as this, okay? Alright, Ms. Jones, is, is there a reason why the twenty ten census data was used as opposed to the twenty twenty?
Oh man, I, it was, it was accessible to us. That's what, that's what we used. We can, if you want to go back and change it, I mean. Now would be the time for you to change it, but there was no, there was no edits or grammars for that, or grammar changes for that. It went through um, at least three or four different levels of review um, within the city, and. It was never questioned. It might just be accessibility.
Yeah, the reason I ask is because um, the population numbers differ, differ. A lot in between uh, twenty ten and twenty twenty, um.
We could easily send a correction letter to the senators if that's what you choose to do. I would be cautious about um. Modifying application before it even gets approved or looked at.
No, I think you answered my question as far as why the um, information was used. Um. I trust that you all know what you're doing as far as that goes. I just, you know, had that question, because it came. Yeah, I think that's it. I can ask the rest of them in a minute.
Anybody else have questions for Ms. Jones right now? Alright, so we're done with the session. So don't I have a motion to approve uh, the consultant agreement with Ms. Jane Jones?
So moved.
City Manager Snyder, you wanted to take the lead on this one?
Yeah, so through, as, excuse me. Um, as stated in the study session, when we were connected with Ms. James, uh, Ms. Jane Jones through Mark Newman with the college, she. Um, does this work for us, especially as her profession. Um, she recently worked with the Battle for the Bank Say as well as Albany to secure funding through the last year's um, round. I don't want to speak for her, so I'll let her um, share a little bit about herself and. Allow you guys to answer any questions.
You're up, Jane.
Okay, let me get back on. So, so good evening, hope you can hear me. Uh, my name is Jane. Is that yes?
Yes.
My name is Jane Jones, and thank you so much. I have spent, I have to think about that for, for a second here. I've spent at least the last three years doing um, CDSs, Community Direct Support, which is kind of the new word for earmark. Um, before that, I did RFPs for city councils, for nonprofits, uh, after earmarks were um. Gone away from government for a couple of years. I worked in the US Senate for three or four years. Worked for our governor for a couple of years, was a professor of political science, absolutely love um. Helping organizations that are smaller and tight, get funding, that they don't have to go and um. Hire a very expensive person to do this sort of work for them. I will say this, um, I. Don't have a website on purpose, because I would get junk thrown at me every single day, and I'm very picky about who I choose to work with. I have a very fond appreciation for. Um, Albany College. I have a fond appreciation for the Albany community. I like that you have a direct need for housing, and I think that that's a very strong um, proposal right now. Um, I think that it is nonpartisan. I think that that's, that's good. That you are looking to help your community with um, a need that fits into the priorities and the so-called buckets. Of funding that's available right now, and I um. This process will be along for the next two years cycle. We're in the first year of that cycle. I don't know what's gonna happen after two years after that. Um, the House Republicans just voted for this process to continue for at least the next two cycles. We're in year one, like I just said. And so we'll have other opportunities to do other projects come year two. That you wish, you can use the money for programming, building, renovation, uh, technology, um. Law enforcement, uh, specialized equipment, um. Everything, patrol cars, fire trucks, is all type of funding that most municipalities go after. I will say that Senator Peters. Has a different take on it than other senators do, where he actually requests that it's a public entity that applies for the funding. And I think that is a direct show that he wants uh, municipalities and counties to be applying for these type of, those type of dollars. Versus what traditionally seems to be for um, anyway, that's a nonprofit, anything that, anything that's not for profit can apply for. It's a year-long process. It takes about a year to get funding usually. Um, you have to go through the community process. Once it goes to the community process, we should be hearing, um, if we made the first round of cuts, so to speak, we should be hearing probably. Oh gosh, transportation HUD would be. Don't, I, I, when I second, when I'm gonna say my date, people are gonna be like Jane said, you know, April thirtieth, so I'm not gonna say that. But it should be, it'll be before the second week of May, and then we'll have another round of. One more probably before June first, and then um. The Senate typically passes their bills, the House passes their bills, they negotiate together, and then they finalize the omnibus bill, and that always seems to now. Come down, um, after the first CR, it'll come down to probably passage in November or December.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Jones?
Yeah. Alright. Alright, Ms. Jones, now, you're spilling a little too quick. I'm gonna see if I can't remember some of what you said previous to not ask any additional question that you've already addressed. Um. So areas that you typically have success in, um, in raising funds for, um, can you mention a few of those?
Of course, yeah. It's, it's the bigger buckets, so it's healthcare, education, it's arts, it's building and renovation, absolutely. It's the, the, what, what, where the buckets are funding are allocated for.
Okay, okay, now, um. Are you mainly focused on um congressional spending or federal level spending? Or is there also like private spending that you, you know, private funding that you um, raise as well?
Well, I don't raise money. I actually go and, and consult and write for the funding. I'm not raising it, soliciting for any dollars. I don't ask for dollars from anybody. On your behalf, or never have, never will. Um, so I'm, I'm, I'm traditionally just called a grant writer, not a solicitor of funds. That's actually a really. Big technical question to, to assume. Um, I pretty much do federal, I do some state. And I have been asked to do some foundation work for folks, which I'd like to do.
Okay, perfect. Okay, I think that helps.
Just wanted to note that the, there was a motion and a second to approve it, it would need to be with the amended dates.
We need to bring that up with you.
So then the dates would have to be amended to actually when we go into this agreement.
Any other questions for Ms. Jones? Councilman French?
I, I just want to say thank you for um, for doing this speculative work for us. We do appreciate it. And uh, I'll keep our fingers and toes crossed.
Yeah, um, Ms. Jones, just for a little clarity, how long have you been working with the city?
Well, I wouldn't consider myself not working with the city because I've been under no contract. I've been working with Albany College for the last, oh lord, I wish Mark was here. Cause you tell me. I think we've done it for two cycles. And then I was, I was contacted by the, help me, please Haley to correct me, I think it was the Albany Economic Development Corporation. Is who reached out to me the first time to say that, that um, we have a housing issue. When we did a, we did a phone call, and I said, listen, the deadline's coming up. If you're gonna hop on this, we need to move. When you get in while the iron's hot. If you don't, you'll be sitting, sitting stale like every, some other cities do, and you'll never be able to be innovative or moving forward.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? But Jane, thank you for being patient and being with us tonight to give us information.
Great, my pleasure.
Yes, Councilwoman Williams?
Yeah, so, um. If I'm understanding this right, the utilization of her services at every use is ten thousand dollars? Is that the case?
Yeah, it's a yearly.
It's a year.
It's a year fee, so you pay eight hundred and some dollars per month. So you could use me for up to, like, I don't know, it'd be silly to use me to do like fifteen different requests, because we'll never get fifteen different requests to go through, and. That's, that's what I would advise, but if we wanted to use this again for next year, it's a yearly fee, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And Attorney Hartness, do you have a question or comment?
I was just gonna say that, I mean, unless the original motion maker is gonna accept as a friendly amendment, the date changed to a vote. With the, the, with the change dates and then vote on the main question.
I would move that we change the consulting agreement timeline from February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three to March twentieth of twenty twenty-three.
Extending.
Extending for one calendar year.
Support.
So you vote on that before we vote on the main question.
So we're voting on agreeing to change the date from March twentieth. And include for one year.
Yes.
For one year. That's what we're voting on right now.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
No.
Lawler?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes. Now we are voting on the contract, for the approval.
Councilmember Reed?
We're going on the what? So now we're voting on the contract? Yes.
Jackson?
No.
Lawler?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jane.
Welcome aboard.
Bring it on.
Alright, next in your packets, we have applications for reappointment for my temp queue for the Building Authority. And Nidia Wuff, um, for the CDA.
So moved.
Support.
Questions or comments? Did you pick me up?
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
We have a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three oh two. Um, to amend uh, finance for purchase and bids.
So moved.
Support.
Attorney Hartness?
Uh, so this is the same ordinance you saw at your last meeting. This is the second reading. The primary changes are. Uh, raising the uh, manager's budgeted spending authority from five thousand to fifteen thousand without pyramiding. Um, anything over fifteen thousand dollars has to be uh, pursuant to our bid process. See here, uh, the uh. Uh, city manager has to uh, report all expenditures in excess of a thousand dollars uh, to um. To council. We built in a provision such that uh, if the city manager goes out for bids, and there are no responsive bids. Uh, the process from that point is to solicit not less than three full, three proposals to bring to council. Uh, for approval, uh, based on the recommendation of the city manager for one of them. Um, and uh, the other change that we made is. Once city council approves a contract, the city manager does not then have to come back to council to approve, approve expenditures. Under that contract, because it's redundant in that council's already approved. The contract, so it's intended to streamline things in that regard, but the, the biggest change was raising the spending threshold because. Uh, that five thousand dollar threshold hasn't been updated since the early nineties. And five thousand dollars does not go very far in the city of Albion.
Do we have questions for our attorney? Ready to click for me go?
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve uh, the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three oh three? Uh, to amend chapter eighteen for the rental registration.
So moved.
Support. And Director Arnold, are you gonna give us some insight?
Essentially changing the yearly date that we require rental units to be registered on. April first of each year to October first of each year. With our adoption schedule, our plans to get that rolled out this year, uh, lined up right with construction season, it's just going to be. Uh, kind of possible very good capacity in the city and that safe road. Start uh, construction season and a practical inspection scene at the same time, and. With the nature of our office, we're gonna run into that issue every year, so every year before we can start a, a year to amend it now. Put that here, the registration date out past the summer, and give everyone's breathing room.
Do we have any questions for Director Arnold? Councilman Lawler?
Thank you so much. Was there a reason um, that, that we decided to do a yearly?
Yeah, so we register units yearly in programs like this, and I guess in general. Everyone else who was doing the rental certification program was doing the yearly registration, so they have a. Different schedule for the inspection than they do for the registration. They want to make sure that they know every year. Where the rental units are. There's tax purposes for that, except for this, as well as just being a bit of a patient part of this. The condition of properties. And even I'd like to be able to provide just better customer service. People really call my office with a lot of questions, uh, and. Being able to provide them some additional information, like we were planning on registration sheets to just ask. Each property owner if they'd like to be included when, when it comes to us and ask, hey, who's renting? Um, and so we were gonna start using it also as a, as a way to communicate. Information on where you can buy a house actively to our residents.
Attorney Hartness?
So just so council is aware, when you look at the, the draft of the ordinance here, really the, the only changes to the language are in section or subsection A. Numbers one, two, and three, everywhere you see where it says October one, that previously read April one. So that's the only change that was made in those three sections. We just switched April one to October one. Yep.
Any other questions? Councilmember Lawler?
Yeah, I'm just having a hard time with, um, if you already registered, why you gotta register? I'm just having a hard time.
Yeah, so that, um, if that's something we want to look back at, that was in the ordinance, uh, we adopted already of rental registration.
I know.
So we have that here the registration so that we have an accurate list of what our properties and what our current properties so that we're not asking to inspect properties that we have no right to under the rental agreement. These, these properties can sometimes change multiple times and if you're kind of hard enough to people, hold on to that way. So, you know, we, we don't want to have someone registered two years ago that, you know, this year we've been made imagine a situation in the future where you registered once, now you sold that, it's a different family in there. And then the cities start sending letters to that address based on a previous owner's registration that start pressuring, uh, owner occupied unit for inspection that, that, that we have no right to and they have a lease. So it's, it's a yearly registration. Uh, it's a thirty-five dollar per unit registration fee, which is all that's considered for municipalities fairly modest. And, uh, yeah, it's kind of essential to, to the ordinance. If there were changes to that, I, I love that in a longer conversation, maybe get something back.
Mayor Pretend Jackson?
Yeah, so, um, the fee, so that's another whole yearly fee.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that we're not, when I say use the word tax, not taxes, but taxing as, um, homeowners for rental. And I think that is kind of steep to do that every year. I think it's something that we need to rework it, to revisit.
Any other questions or comments? City Clerk Domingo?
Thank you.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes. We have a motion to approve the White Men, uh, proposal for the MEDC, CDPT, public gathering space grant.
So move.
Support.
And city managers.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So the Michigan Economic Development Corporation or the MEDC, they recently released the CDVG Public Gathering Spaces Grant application. Um, so the currently the DDA, they've been working with White Men and Associates to develop a site master plan for Stofa Plaza. Um, they've been working with project engineer Ben Baker. Um, upon this grant announcement, um, Ben reached out and said the Stofa Plaza is an ideal project for this type of funding. Um, so we discussed, um, there's a subcommittee from the DDA. We've met with him and we discussed if they will provide us with a proposal to move forward with this. I think this is a good opportunity for the city to collaborate or partner with the DDA to submit a grant application to get this, um, to complete some of the projects that have been identified in that master plan. Um, so the application deadline is April twenty-eighth. Um, there is a ten percent local match requirement for total project cost. The minimum grant award is seven hundred fifty thousand dollars up to two million. Um, so we will be splitting this, uh, proposal cost. So the city will cover two thousand four eighty-seven fifty with the DDA remaining, covering that remaining half.
Any questions for our city managers? City Clerk Domingo?
Councilmember Brian?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes.
We have a motion to adjourn to closed session.
So move.
Support. I would favor saying aye?
No, I, I will call. I'm sorry.
Oh, all right. City Clerk Domingo?
Councilmember Jackson?
Yeah.
Lawler?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes. Meeting adjourned at eleven P M.
Alright, everybody, please make sure that your microphones are turned back on. Go ahead and resume counseling at nine oh nine P M. Close up our meetings. Do we have any future agenda items?
Alright.
Oh. I have to refocus just a minute. I have some notes to myself. Um, I would just like to follow up on the collaboration and to make sure when we present ourselves or when we collaborate regarding the housing in terms of intergovernmental agreement, in terms of who is going to do what. So we will present ourselves in an organized and fashionable manner when we're dealing with developers or when we're dealing with people who are interested in the community. I know um at the last meeting, we talked about the housing champion goals and we even took it to the point of a possible resolution. You know, E D C and city council should work together, you know, along with and I like the idea of the city manager and director of E D C working together. And we want that to be solid, you know, we want it to be clear cut in terms of who is responsible for what, you know, as it's presented to the public. You know, the two organizations may know, the two boards may know, but we want it to be presented to the public in terms of intergovernmental agreement between city council and E D C and maybe to come back and talk about who has responsibility for what and how it's going to be carried out. Because we're in a pivotal position, being on the edge of of Marshall, basically. We don't want to discourage any developer. We don't want them to feel that we don't know what we're doing. We can't make up our own minds about something. So if there are clear cut guidelines in terms of everybody's opinion, then we won't need the housing champion goals. We won't need, you know, a resolution because that intergovernmental agreement will be there. So we would like to have something like that in terms of what E D E D C expects as well as what city council expects.
Any other item?
Uh, is Mrs. Burrow going to be on another?
She is. She'll be here.
And then I would also, I'm going by things people have asked me. Can we have someone from the connector, Albion Marshall Connector come and talk about the program and how their schedules and things run? Because sometimes they don't run and so people have to find other ways to get to where they're going. It would be good to have them come.
And not just as necessary for next meeting, but it just that idea popped into my head. If we're thinking about a battery plant, we better get with transportation to figure out a way whether we can get bus transportation for Albion residents out to that battery plant as we start thinking about jobs and things.
Did you see the email that came from?
I have an update on that for you.
Yeah. Okay, because there was the email.
Oh, great. I didn't get it.
This afternoon regarding transportation.
I was working right like.
Oh, you were working. Okay.
Any other agenda items? Alright, public comment. So if there's anybody in the agenda that in the agenda in the gallery that would like to stand and address council, you can have the opportunity in three minutes of yours.
Hello. Uh, my name is Ian Barbour, live here in Albion, two six eight three six B Drive South. Um, I just want to say, well, there's a couple of points I wanted to just like, uh, the land bank. Uh, we had a couple of meetings with the community. I would like to have an opportunity to speak with whoever's running the land bank. Because there seems to me that it's it's like difficult sometimes to, uh, there's certain developers that want to do things in Albion and they're certainly having a difficult time getting a property. So I want to be able to bring, instead of, uh, asking you guys, I want to go right to the source and be able for the, so the community can ask them questions so they can have their question answered by the right person. Uh, that's one. Uh, two, uh, I fully highly agree with what Ms. Davis was saying. Um, I'm all for the project coming from, uh, to Marshall. Uh, but I don't want a piece of the pie. I want the whole pie. I want, so that can spawn something for Albion. But like she was saying, we have to be in order for that. Uh, when you're a business and you're bringing that type of capital, um, I'm not going to spend my money somewhere where there, where we're not all on the same page. Because that's going, the end result won't be, we're going to miss out on money. So from far, and I put this on me, far as me, I play life like I played a game Monopoly. That's the only board game I will play with my children because I'm teaching them about life and they don't even know it. So right now today, I see my business as boardwalk. Here real shortly, I'm trying to buy Park Place. So just, you know, if we all work on one accord, we can get a lot done, you know. And one thing, other thing that I see is there's a trust, uh, link missing here. There, there, in order to be on a good team, you have to trust one another. You, you have to, you know, because I've seen over the years, I I've been hoping and wishing for some young people to get on city council and be the city manager and all. We, we, we wanted that. Once they get there, we got to support these people and y'all got to work together. So because we're doing the greater good for this community. I want, the end result is, um, and I'm running out of time. The end result is you want the little children that grew up in Albion to have a similar story that I can tell about Albion. I don't want to hear about the what could have been or what was. We can have it today. We just got to work together. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else in the gallery?
I'm Charles Savage and I live at forty one eighty four Brown Road in Parma.
I'm Al Smith, twelve oh nine Adams Street here in Albion. I moved to Albion in nineteen sixty two with my wife and daughter. And Mr. Williams, there was no housing in Albion in nineteen sixty two available to my wife and my child. And I'd like to see that change in the near future. What we, and Mr. Smith and I are up here for is to address one item. And that's the front lawn of the Parma, correction, the Albion American Legion post. It's referred to as Barnes Park. Have any of you been down to Barnes Park recently? If you have, don't lie and say it in there. Miss Reed, thank you.
Yeah.
If you have been down there, don't bother to go with a picnic lunch because you will not find a table or anything that you can put that picnic lunch on to eat. And if you plan on grilling, don't take your own grill. Now, the reason Mr. Smith and I are up here is because we, as part of the Albion American Legion, want to take on that park as a project this year to refurbish all those tables, all the underpinnings and make that a park that is a park. It has been neglected since nineteen eighty three when it was funded by the land development on Lansing. And then there was a nice gift of, I think, I said, I quoted the wrong number the other day, five thousand dollars in one year and then fifteen hundred dollars the next to make sure that was acceptable. That's what Mr. Smith and I are here with this evening. We met with Mrs. Snider. We went with Ms. Jackson. We showed them the pictures. They had said, oh, really? Let's see what we can do. We are going to take that on with the council's permission and everyone else to bring that back to this pleasant thing that your people want to enjoy. If you were to go down there on the Fourth of July, you couldn't have done it. You'd have to sit on the grass and the trees are overtaking the river. We have to work with the D N R. So it's a task that's in front of us. We are up to it and we want to take it on. So that's why we're sitting here as long as we have and being patient. Thank you. Here's the collaboration that we are going to work with Ms. Snyder and Ms. Jackson on. Uh, and what, uh, Mr. Chuck, what he failed to mention is we are funding this. We are going to pay for the lumber. We're paying for all the nuts and bolts, screws, washers. We're going to do all the labor. Uh, we're going to have the Boy Scout troops down there with us. Uh, we're going to clean up the park completely, build all new picnic tables. Well, the base, you know, paint those, uh, pressure treated lumber on all the tables. Uh, the only thing we're asking from the city at this point is, uh, grills, uh, and trash cans and fix the water fountain. Other than that, it's our baby and permission. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to stand and address a project or council?
Pardon?
You're done.
Hi, my name is Burgey Ammerman. Um, I live at three oh five East Main uh, in Homer and I'm the current E D C president and C E O of Albion and I'm happy to be in that role. Um, uh, I wanted to recognize, uh, Mrs. Jones's, Jane Jones's comments about how much she appreciated that we have a housing lead and how critical that's going to be. So I take that as, uh, this council tonight opted to contract with her for her professional services. And I believe that's because you see her as a professional subject matter expert. And for her to say that it's good that we're having a lead, I think that gives us an idea that from the external point of view, that's very critical. So I hope that that, um, was, was heard by you. It was heard by me and I appreciate her for that comment. Um, we are working very diligently with a new housing committee to have an oversight uh, that is a mix between the city and the E D C board to make sure that we're in appropriate ways. Um, as most of you know, uh, by now, I'm very process oriented. Um, I'm very transparent. I'm also collaborative and strategic and intentionally compassionate. So, um, I grew up here. This is my hometown. This means a lot to me. So if I ask a lot of questions or I'm very curious, you just need to know that's how I learn. And that's how I, uh, find out what I need to know so I can do the right thing and make the right next steps. Um, I did appreciate the opportunity to be involved, um, with the discussions with Jane Jones. Uh, I was introduced to her back in October by Mark Newman, who's on my board and very much appreciate that. And we began conversation shortly thereafter between the city manager and the mayor and I as we began to formulate those applications. So it was good to have a template that was used in the last round by, um, Mr. Newman at Ruston. And then we just, uh, kind of, you know, did some changes. So it was good to have that much time to spend on those. We took a little break over the Christmas holiday, but it was nice to have a long period of time. And I think that, um, it would be good for us as a process to make sure that others are aware of some of those things so that we can, you know, be in a unity. Um, I know we just helped the city with a five point eight million dollar infrastructure ask that was for the roads and, um, I did circulate that out for letters of support. And I do appreciate that you were able to provide those things.
Anyone else? Alright, city managers report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So copy of my report wasn't included in the packet, number one. So the American Legion Service Project, yes, Councilmember Jackson and I, we met with those two fine gentlemen in the background Tuesday, March seventh, to discuss the proposed service project for Barnes Park. Um, so I have reached out to the D N R to get approval so that we can, um, remove or they can remove some of the trees within that water rating, um, clean up that area. Um, we're very thankful that they have agreed or offered to take on refurbishing all of the picnic tables. At last week's Recreation Advisory Commission, we, the board discussed amending our grant parks and recreation master plan. Um, it was shared at council meeting a few meetings ago, with Mr. Jackson, the other improvements to that Barnes Park. When talking with, um, our grant administrator through the state, they recommend that we do include those projects in our master plan. It just opens us up to additional grant funding to, to fund that additional proposed project. So that's in the process, but we are very thankful to, um, for the American Legion offering to assist us in cleaning up that park space. On the D D A, they held their regular meeting on March first. Um, the biggest topic of discussion was the downtown parking study, the downtown speaker system and the public gathered space grant program. Um, with the downtown parking study, um, the results of that study shows that we are in a good position to support the new development that has already begun to happen and will continue to happen in our downtown area. We have, um, enough parking, well, um, I would say more than enough to, to support that. I think we wanted to get ahead of that new develop, make sure that we can support the new businesses and the residential units that are planning to come to the downtown area. That parking study supported what we kind of already thought. Um, they also provided us with some budget information on how much it would take to repair not only a full lot, but even individual parking spaces. Um, so we will be trying to work that into our budget so that we can start to improve the parking lots and parking spaces that, that surround our downtown area. And then E D C, um, myself and C E O, President, um, Immerman, we met with our M E D C rep, Michelle Adet-Bommen on Wednesday, March eighth, just for our monthly check-in meeting. We just discussed the two current projects, um, which are the C D B G rental rehab and then the first phase of the Albion plan. Um, she did share with us that a second round of the revitalization and placemaking program um, will be announced by the M E D C in the near future. So I know that we were going to discuss possible projects that we could take advantage of that grant funding. So stay tuned for more information on that. Um, summer youth employment, the workforce development committee, um, a few members of that committee and I met on Thursday, March ninth, to discuss summer youth employment opportunities here in town. to discuss summer youth employment opportunities here in town. So the group now is working to identify the need for twenty twenty three youth employment. We do realize that we're kind of starting a little late in the game for this um this year's summer season. But still getting that data will help put us in a better position to make sure that we are ready to go come um next summer. They be a they held their regular meeting on Thursday, March ninth. Um, I did send out an email, I believe it was the end of last week to you all. So um, and to share that final report from our Saturday strategic goal session. So myself and my team, we met on Tuesday, March fourteenth to re- review and discuss that final report. Um, as suggested in the final report, we are working to refine the proposed goal statements and identify initiatives to address those goals. And we will bring that back to council and then it will be up to the city council to prioritize the goal statement. So please, um, we should have that report ready to go by the first April meeting. Um, and we are meeting actually tomorrow to continue to to refine and fine tune that document for you all. The collective bargaining process has begun with two union um union groups. It's hard to believe that we're already almost through a three-year contract with all four unions. Myself, as well as H R Director, um, A V A, we met with our police officers union as well as our T P O M or Public Services Union. So we will continue to meet with the both union groups to hopefully come up with some agreeable terms for a new um contractual agreement. And then we still do have two more, two more union groups that we will have to begin that process with. And then as um Ms. Ammerman stated, with the assistance of the E D C, we submitted um another appropriation request to the Office of Congressman Tim Walberg. Um, McIntosh Park as well as Holland Park, they've received quite a bit of revitalization or enhancements over the past few years. Um, so with the complete replacement of the North Albion Street Bridge, the second phase of McIntosh Park and the expansion of the Albion River Trail along North Albion Street, we thought it would be a good idea to leverage all of those projects that will happen this this year to request, um, I believe it was five point eight million to fully replace the waterway, um, water main, sewer main, and then the road within both of those areas in which we'll hopefully complete those revitalization. Um, efforts that have been underway for quite some time. So hopefully, um, we get some good news on that. And then also, um, I will be participating um as a M M L sixteen fifty panelist panelist member for Women Leading Local Government at the University of Michigan Sports School of Public Policy event on Monday, March twenty seventh. I'm really looking forward to um sitting with some of my colleagues. I'm Rebecca Flurry, Bat Creek City Manager, and then former Albion City Manager, Dr. Sherri Harrowe, will also be a panelist member. Um, and just get to engage with the students to share our experiences in leading local government. Um, and then this past Friday, I had our quarterly meeting with the county administrator controller and then the surrounding um city managers. A lot is happening in Calhoun County. The big topic of conversation um was the countywide transportation initiative that has been well underway for quite some time. This started pre-COVID and then once COVID hit, it kind of stopped. Um, but we are in the process of um finalizing that. I don't counsel if you can recall, it was last spring, I believe, when we had two individuals, Doug Farrell, who was the Assistant Community Development um Director for the county. And I'm blanking, I'm picturing her face, but she oversees Battle Creek's transportation. They came and gave a presentation on on that service for um town county. Um, we all, I just emailed out a letter that we received from the Administrator's Office today. So next step, they are looking to develop a county transportation authority. So this this board will oversee um transportation, which will be countywide for Calhoun County. Um, obviously, you have to identify a level of funding, so they are looking for a countywide mileage to support this authority. Um, it will not be on the ballot, I believe, until August of twenty twenty four, going into effect in twenty twenty five. Um, but the next step, all municipalities or jurisdictions in Calhoun County, they have the option to either opt in or opt out. So if you opt in to support this transportation authority, um, you will then receive service if it is approved by county voters. If you opt out, unfortunately, you will not have access to to that transportation service. So that's the next step. I shared in my email administration, we will be bringing forth a recommendation for council to consider on whether we should opt in or opt out. I will say we are looking to opt in because we all know transportation has been a big topic and we need transportation here in our community. So it will also be um transportation within the actual city. So you can go from the store to different areas in town, but then also countywide. So it is a um step to further address the Albion Marshall Connector because that just goes from Albion and Marshall. Um, in that same meeting, I talked with Derek Perry. He is the Marshall City Manager. We are will be scheduling a meeting to discuss the Albion Marshall Connector. Um, Councilmember Reed, maybe the reason we haven't seen some levels of service, we have to identify a new funding model for that. The current funding model is not supporting uh the the maintenance for the vehicles and to cover the cost for to provide that service. So we'll be having that conversation and see how that plays a part for this full countywide transportation. Um, Administrator Controller Kelly Scott, she also discussed what we all know with the Blue Oval um battery plant coming, that we will probably develop a subcommittees countywide with all of the local city managers to discuss how do we put ourselves in good positions to support this this new development that's coming to our area. It's not only going to change the city of Marshall, but but the entire county. She addressed, talked about housing. We know that every, not only city volume, but housing is an issue in all of the cities here in the county. So we will be meaning to discuss that, being able to support this plant by providing workforce. Um, so I will provide you with more information as those meetings begun to happen. Um, also in the report, you have individual department updates from all of the all of the individual departments. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions. I'll terminate.
Uh, yes, this dawned on me in terms of uh intercity uh collaboration in terms of transportation. Do you think in this grant, we can, well, we used to have a taxi driver, a taxi service, but maybe employment for someone in the community to do Uber? Not, I mean, Uber type of transportation or taxi or something like that in terms of uh inner city transportation as well as um intercounty transportation.
So if this is approved, that's kind of what it will be. Um, Kelly Scott, she kind of referred to as Calhoun County's Uber service. So it will be able to transport you within the city limits, but then you can also take it and it can transfer, transfer you all the way to Bat Creek, Marshall, Homer, Springfield, wherever you need to go. Um, if that jurisdiction participates, so.
Right. Kind of like the B C go on series.
Yes. Oh, okay.
Branch County area.
Okay. Well, that's what we need because if you don't have a car, you can't go anyplace in an area. The other thing, I like the idea, human resources. Uh, I like the idea of the board member orientation. And I would like to kind of extend that to council member orientation. And I don't know if there is a format that has been in place previously, you know, during.
It's called the mill train.
No, I'm talking about here, you know, orientation to for for Albion City Council members, not just coming to the council seat and say, oh, you do that? Is that how you do it? You know, so you know, as you are, you know, because orientation is very important, you know. So just some minor things that we may not know about, including the computer, you know, and the systems that, you know, we haven't, we haven't been privy to. But when you're thinking of new new orientation for employees, you know, as board numbers come on, we may want to just have a sit down conversation even, you know, with the new board numbers as they're coming on board to kind of bring us up in terms of policies and procedures.
Any other questions? Yep.
Can we uh welcome the new P P W director?
We're gonna actually have our new gentleman, Elmer Garrett.
Uh, Mitchell and myself conducted some interviews in early February. And we are fortunate enough to have Elmer Garrett accept our position as Department of Public Works Superintendent. Um, we were very glad to get him from the school district of Olivette with his management skills and directorship with their facilities. Elmer.
Well, I'm real short here, all right? Um, I'm just, I'm happy to be here. Uh, twenty two years at Albion College. And then they told me now that I'm like, wait a minute, I want to be back home. So the opportunity came up. Haley, Kevin, Mayor Snyder, I just want to thank you guys. And I look forward to the opportunity of serving the community. So thank you.
We're very happy to have you on.
Thanks. Thank you.
Yeah, and I got to run the ground together today.
Yeah. Yeah. Any other questions or comments for City Manager later? All right, you have a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
Of course. How will favor say I? Posed. Meeting adjourned nine thirty seven P M.
Didn't excuse Councilman Lawler.
Yeah.
You know, she usually.
All right. Okay.